Good afternoon, everybody. It is 4:00 PM on Tuesday, June 15th, 2021. And this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. And want to again just welcome everyone. I see all of our councilors are present. A city manager and our new city attorney, welcome Eric. This will be your first time with us in your new capacity. Congratulations. I also wanted to make sure that we have someone from USG present. If not, I think they'll jump on when they can. We'll go ahead and get started. I wanted to kind of give a overview of what we're going to do during the work session. We're going to have the first item, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Outreach and Engagement. And then at 5:00 PM, we do need to do kind of a hard stop to make sure that we have time to speak with P&amp;Z on the item for Hickory Trail. So I wanted to just give that heads up. All right, we will get started. And our city manager, Jeff Roy, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A pleasure to be with you this afternoon. I am going to be pinch hitting for Rachel Kilburg, who authored the memo in your packet but could not be here tonight. So we're going to talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act, the local fiscal recovery fund. As you recall, this allocation to Iowa City of 18.3 million occurred shortly after the president signed the ARPA legislation into law in March of this past year. Again, our allocation is 18.3 million. We have received half of that now, with the other half expected about 12 months from now. But this afternoon, we're going to be focusing on our engagement plan. And again, that's outlined in your packet in a memo that Rachel put together. I think it's really important to know upfront that the outreach and engagement on this will likely evolve quite a bit over time. As you might recall, we have until the end of 2024 to spend these dollars. And there is a reason that the federal government is not giving us all the money upfront because they do want us to undertake some public engagement and planning with these funds. So we're going to start slowly. We're going to ramp up. And I imagine over the next course of years, we'll probably have to start engagement and slow it down and start it and slow it down around a number of different issues. The Treasury and the state of Iowa are still updating guidance. They're answering FAQs and assisting cities and counties with clarification. So we are still learning more as we go. The last update from the Treasury was just on June 10th. We have kicked off an engagement with a few very small steps. We began with some website content, some educational videos, news releases, social media posts, and an initial survey. We are currently now working on expanding to translated materials and offering additional content for the public related to these funds. Over the next two months, we'd like to ramp up our engagement, both by ourselves and in cooperation with Johnson County. And for our efforts, which are detailed in that memo, we're going to continue to collect that survey data that's out there. We're going to begin taking open-ended feedback through email, and that can be done in any language that's preferred by the emailer. And we'll go ahead and translate those responses. We're going to try to hold two listening sessions, one virtual, one out in the community at a location to be determined. We also plan to attend and table at one of the farmers markets this July and begin to engage with some folks in that setting. We're going to look to create a list of stakeholders to engage with. Those could include the excluded worker fund advocates that you've heard from at recent meetings, your agency impact coalition, small business support groups, arts and culture groups, and so on. But really trying to get targeted input from a few key stakeholders in the area. We're going to ask all of your boards and commissions for any input that they might have. So we're going to ask them to schedule a little bit of time at their next available meeting and have them consider what uses they feel might be appropriate for you all as councilors to consider. Similarly, we'll reach out to neighborhood associations and to nonprofit agencies in the community as well. I mentioned the collaboration with the county. We had a really positive meeting with the county today. We met with their ARPA team. And it appears that they're going to be pursuing some facilitated listening posts throughout the county. And they've graciously invited us to participate with them for those in Iowa City. And we talked about having them participate in ours if they wish and sharing information and really making sure that we're working together and hopefully making the public feel like if they convey their priorities to one of the government entities, that that'll be heard and shared with the other government entity as well. So more to come on that, but that collaboration will be in addition to what's included in your memo here today. As we expand on public input opportunities, I do want to mention just a few key things that I think you'll need to keep in mind as we move forward. One, the guidance is still evolving. I know nobody really wants to hear that. It'd be great if we had all the clarity we needed right now. But it is important to know that we still are receiving updated guidance. And that level of detail is really important when you begin program execution, when you really start designing assistance programs and you have to look at what relationships with third-party partners might be like, what eligibility criteria might need to be included, what documentation, if any, needs to be maintained. All those things are things that we are learning as we go and as frankly, as the federal government develops additional clarifications. The second thing I really think we're going to need to do this summer is help people kind of imagine or dream what these funds could be used for. Right now in our presentations to you and even on our website, we are describing the use of funds in the same language that is described in the federal legislation, which isn't exactly clear to a layperson. We talk about recovery from economic impact or the negative health impacts of COVID. We talk about infrastructure and premium pay. As we start to drill down into this guidance, we realize that there's a wide range of uses. And I think we really need to challenge ourselves to make sure that those that are interested in the community can really begin to imagine, dream, and take time to process what these funds could be used for. So we're going to start to use some specific examples or at least categories of examples that we feel could help. So for example, we can talk about investing in neighborhood community centers throughout the city or in certain portions of the city, expanding transit solutions, new permanent affordable housing development, expanded mental health and crisis services in the community, targeted job training programs and business incubators, wealth building opportunities for historically marginalized populations, whether that's real estate, housing, or else climate resiliency activities. We're going to start speaking more in those terms and hopefully get people thinking that, oh, could you do this with that? Or could we use it for this? And really what we're hoping is that natural partnerships may form and the community will begin to kind of coalesce around several key objectives that then we can really build upon in our future discussions. So look for some more of that. And certainly as we get into our public engagement this summer, we're going to be trying to do that as opposed to talking strictly in that federal language, which we've done now while we're learning the ins and outs of the program. And then lastly, I fully realize that while the public input process takes time, there may be some urgent matters that we have to attend to. And I'm committed along with the staff here to making sure that we remain flexible to respond to urgent matters that you identify as a council. I'm excited to kind of share with you some very high-level details of one that's coming up. The city staff in your NDS department has been working with the county Shelter House Affordable Housing Coalition and Iowa Legal Aid to develop a eviction kind of help desk at the courthouse. So as the federal eviction protections start to slip away at the end of this month, we really want to try to be a partner in making sure that those that might face eviction have every opportunity to avoid that consequence. So this is a partnership in which Iowa Legal Aid and their partners will have an actual presence in the courthouse and may be able to intervene before that eviction decision is made. And not only prevent the immediate eviction, but also then work with those individuals to get them connected to the other sources that are out there, the state funding, the federal funding that's being administered through us. Those are the types of partnerships that I think we're going to have to continue to look to build to address some of these urgent matters. With the program I just briefly outlined, we're going to use local funds to stand that program up because we don't know enough about the ARPA funds yet to feel comfortable to deploy those. And we certainly need your approval for any type of ARPA-related decision. So that'll be set up with local funds. And thankfully, we have the ability to continue to be flexible with local funds while we navigate all the rules for the American Rescue Plan Act. And then lastly, as Rachel mentioned in the memo, our hope is that we can get through this first round, I'll call it, of public input and really have a detailed work session with you at your first meeting in September, where we can share with you the summary of the input that we've received and really allow you to start making some probably higher-level decisions on focus areas. So we're hoping at that meeting, you'll be able to really sift through that public input and begin to tell staff that, hey, these are two or three really high-priority areas that we want to begin to drill down on. And then we might, you know, depending on what those are and what questions remain, we may have to pull together even more partners to say, okay. For example, if we're going to be really focused on affordable housing, let's get some folks around the table and think of all the different ways in which we can deploy these dollars to support our housing goals that we have here in Iowa City. So that's kind of our rough timeframe. We feel like we need a good month and a half to two months to do these engagement activities. I think the county is thinking roughly along that same timeframe with their facilitated listening posts. And I think by the end of that, we should be in a really good position to have some detailed conversations with you about the priorities that you see for the funds and the particular uses that you see for the funds. So I'll stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We'd love to hear any ideas that you have that might be in addition to what we put forward. And we'll certainly do our best to execute on those.
I'll just jump in. Thank you for that presentation, Jeff, and thanks to Rachel for the memo. I'm really grateful to hear, as we're talking about having a robust outreach plan, I'm really grateful to hear a couple of things. Number one, that collaboration with the county so that people can hopefully just come to one or the other of those government entities and know that they're going to be, you know, that their input will be taken and passed along. And then the other one, what you were just saying, since we have even this sort of short-term immediate inputs timeframe being, you know, a month and a half or so, really grateful to hear that we're still looking at emergency kind of immediate things that we can do with local funds to kind of, you know, in the meantime, so that we're not having to wait until the end of that public input period to meet some of those needs. And I'm just curious, like, if the, so the eviction protection program that we're talking about could be, is being planned right now, what's the status of the other relief programs that we're using local dollars that we have? Because I think it'd be helpful to contextualize that as we're talking about this timeframe.
Yeah, so if you have your packet in front of you, in your June 10th packet, it would be page 21. It's a memo from Tracy Hightshew on our COVID relief programs. We have a couple of programs that are still open here. And Tracy's on this call, so Tracy, please, please jump in if I say anything wrong here. The local funds that are being administered by the Shelter House for eviction, foreclosure, and prevention, this is rent and mortgage and utilities, we have roughly $50,000 left there. And again, as we imagined that fund when we created that, that was to kind of catch anybody that was falling through the cracks on all the other relief programs, the state and federal programs. So about 50,000 left there, about 75 spent out of that program. And then we also have our second round of CDBG dollars. And we have about 187,000 left in that program, that again, shelter houses administering. That was the one, the council mayor called, started with community crisis services. And then we transitioned that over to Shelter House kind of midway through the pandemic. So between those sources of funds, we have over $200,000 in existing programs to help those that may be facing eviction or utility shut-offs. And then finally, that doesn't include the state program. So we don't administer the state program, but there's a lot of people in this community that are working really hard to connect people with the state program. That's one that you might have heard some frustration surrounding because it's been a really slow process once those applications are filed to get them reviewed and ultimately paid. So, but there are quite a bit of funds left in that state program as well. Tracy, did I miss anything there?
Nope. In my memo, that was funds spent to date. So out of the second round of CDBG funding that we got through the Iowa Economic Development Authority, we've spent 187,000. That's about 50% of what we have. So we have about 50% left.
Thanks for clarifying.
My question to Tracy, for the CBD fund that you said is starting community and now in the shelter house, and we have 187,000 left. I know that the rule was 3,000 or 4,000 or something like that. Can you tell me like how much?
Yeah, you can get up to six months. It has to be consecutive months of assistance, up to $4,800. That's the benefit through the CDBG program.
Okay, can you just tell me the consecutive months and the maximum? Is that a city rule or federal law?
The consecutive part is a federal rule, so we can't change that locally. The amount we could change. So the 4,800 was set locally, but the consecutive up to six months is a federal requirement that I can't change.
You mean if somebody used three months last year, they cannot use anymore?
No.
Because they did not do the consecutive.
Yeah, it has to be consecutive. Under the Community Development Block Grant Program, emergency payments were hardly ever used before COVID, and it was a maximum of three months. And you had to take three months of consecutive amount of assistance. It was not, it wasn't meant to be like a tenant-based rent assistance program that you see in home. So it had that provision that it could only do three months. And then HUD did a waiver because of COVID that allowed you to go up to six months, but it still has to be consecutive.
What about the local money?
The local money is three months of assistance up to 3,200, and that does not need to be consecutive. So if you got it in January, then you had some extra sources of income for February, March. You could go back. So that doesn't have to be consecutive. That could be at any time, but just three months.
And if somebody used it last year, the three months, they cannot apply again?
The way that we've been administering the program is yes. Under those same pot of funds, I think we allocated up to 125,000. For those funds, once you met your three months of assistance, you'd be done. So it's either three months of assistance or you've reached the 3,200. That is how Shelter House has administered the program.
But that's a city rule?
Yes, we can change the rules, yes.
Okay, thanks.
And just as a comparison, Tracy, if you know what the Iowa Finance Authority, like duration or amounts?
The funding that is available now for renters is 12 months, up to 12 months of assistance.
Okay, and is there a total cap, like a total amount cap, do you know?
Not that I know offhand. I didn't see it on their website. They just said you could apply up to 12 months. So I can find that out though.
For the homeowner, it's still 3,600, $3,600 max for the homeowner. And it's only, they get one time for the first round, and they can have another one for the second round if they are eligible. But for the renter is just like 12 months, but you have to apply every month. Yeah, it is up to 12 months. You have to apply every month. But that's a second round.
Okay, thank you.
If you get three months last year, you're still eligible for this year for 12 months.
Kind of in follow-up to Mayo Portem's original question about the three months and 3,200, obviously, last year, we had no idea that, say in August, that it was going, this COVID crisis is going to run through this long, this late in this year. And some of those folks maybe are faltering again. And so you'd said, we as the city would have to change our rules. What would we need to do about that? Would that be at another meeting? We'd make a resolution? Or what would we have to do to go about maybe helping these folks out that need some help again?
It would be an amendment. You could do that. I think originally, we're thinking after we got the 125,000, if any additional funds were allocated, at that point, we come back to you about, do you want new rules? But yes, you can amend the current agreement just by expressing that desire. And then we do it. I think we've done an amendment six times so far for the local funds. So it'd be, it'd just be another amendment.
Yeah, Councilwoman Taylor, you don't need to wait for another meeting. You do have this as an information packet item in your packet. We would like council direction on any rule changes because you designate, or I'm sorry, you dictated some rule changes early on in this process as a whole. So from a staff comfort level, if you want to change rules, we'd appreciate that coming from the council as a whole. But if you know what you want to do tonight, you could do that. Or if you'd rather us place it on an upcoming agenda, we could do that as well. But we don't need a formal action. We just need some idea of consensus with the council.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to point out that in addition to the federal eviction moratorium expiring at the end of this month, the governor has also cut off the additional $300 a week in unemployment insurance benefits. And that is, I suspect that that's going to have a really serious impact on a number of people who were depending on that to get by.
I do know that there are a few things with the current program that, as I see that, we had 125,000 allocated, and we still have funds available. Not knowing exactly why some of those funds aren't already spent to date, I guess that, as Counselor Taylor mentioned, when we started this, we had no idea that we would be in this same situation more than a year later. And so I think I would propose that we switch or, you know, direct staff to do the amendment of three months. If we can do it, in a way, a second round for individuals that might be having the same need. So that would be what I would propose as a second round. It sounds like the consecutive months are not an issue for the most part, but I do believe that at this point, if anyone would have financial needs that have already gotten it in the past, I personally would be comfortable with a second round.
For the implementation for the amendment, so you're basically saying you want to start. So if they had 3,200, they're now eligible for 6,400? Is that what you're saying? Okay. Or so six months up to 6,400 or?
If that's the easiest way to do it is up to six months, 6,400. I think sometimes the up to six months might be a little problematic. I don't know if, because one month you might be good. You know, you might have some extra income you didn't apply. Or, I don't know, seem like, if you don't get all of the money, I think it can be, you want to be able to spend all of the money. That's a part of the challenge, I think.
Just as FYI, when Shelter House, the local funds, they use this as funding of last resort. So if they can get folks in the emergency shelter or emergency solutions grant, if they can get them through the CDBG or the Iowa Finance Authority, they're going that route. So they use this pot. When you'd ask why there's money still left, it's because they use these funds when there's no other sources available and they can assist.
I had a question about that phasing. We had in our late handouts a memo from, or an email from Chrissy King and Ellie about eligibility. Or as you were just saying, Tracy, I think the last resort, the idea that you apply for the Iowa Finance Authority funds and have to be, you have to show you're not eligible first. Is that, is that right? Maybe I'm getting this wrong. If somebody can kind of summarize what?
Yeah, they're leading people and they're helping people apply to all the other funding sources available. And if they're not eligible for any reason, that's when they're using this fund. Or if somebody's received forcible, what do you call it, an eviction petition? That's when they forego the IFA assistance and they help immediately if it's going to prevent eviction right away. So not everyone has to apply for IFA. So like I said, if you get that notice, then they'll help you right away because your landlord's not going to wait.
Yeah, I saw they are helping, I guess, yesterday, they just have a like wonderful case, which is some person who applied for IFA, but while he waiting for IFA, he get, you know, a court order, and they take him to the court. So they just decide to help him. He doesn't have to wait for IFA. I think, yeah, sometime they just, yeah, go ahead and do that. They don't have to wait for IFA if you have eviction notice.
Are there, are there times when they can tell based on who the person, the person's information that they will not qualify for IFA and just give ahead, aside from the, aside from the issue of eviction notices?
That might be a question for Chrissy, but I'm assuming if there's something that they catch where they know they're not eligible, they would not have them go through the process.
Thanks. The email that you had from the Shelter House that's in your late handouts, that was a request for an amendment to allow for undocumented residents to go straight into this program if they have a fear of sharing their information with a state or federal program. So as it would be right now, if you're an undocumented resident, you still may be able to access state or federal funds. But I think we can all understand and appreciate that there could be some situations in which people are hesitant to file. They may feel more comfortable with local funds. So that's the amendment that's being requested. Tracy, I don't have a problem with that amendment. We'd like council to weigh in on that. I think the consideration for council is you will move through your local funds faster. And thus, you may have a request to replenish those funds at a quicker rate. And, you know, keep in mind, with the major relief funds that we have now, the 18.3 million that we're talking about with ARPA, those are federal dollars. And there very well likely will be some documentation requirements. So we might run into that same issue. And it's, we certainly don't have local funds to match the 18.3 million. So that idea, we're just going to have to talk through that when that time comes. Because while we can replenish 25,000 here, 50,000 here, and keep that local fund going and help people, when it comes to significant relief measured in millions, we're not going to have that flexibility as a local government.
So I do.
I don't think that we need to match the 18,000 because we have, in Iowa City, maybe around 200 families back. Maybe they need local help. And I just believe that the American Rescue Fund, I think according to you, Jeff, there is a way that the city can use those kind of fund too, like for cities, things. If we really come to the point that we need some more fund to like help people who cannot receive help from government, you know, like undercommitted people in general, we can just. use somebody for American Rescue Fund to help the city cover the illegible stuff and you that money that we allocated for city thing. You know, I think as a council and as a staff, and I know that the staff is very creative, they can figure out a way. And keep on my, mind that is not like really eighteen million, you know, just like few people who going to be serving. How much did you allocate for the local fund so far?
Local funds so far, we've allocated a hundred and twenty five thousand to the program. Only seventy five thousand has been used.
Okay, then seventy five thousand only being used so far and we have fifty thousand left. Thus we are sinking for second round. Maybe that would be another seventy five thousand that can be used. So maybe they are not going to even use the American Rescue Fund. Anyway, I'm just, that's my two cents and I, I'm, I'm sure hundred percent the staff has many creative way to come up because those few people is not a lot in our community. So we figured out, our staff would figure it out, I'm sure.
Appreciate that vote of confidence, Mayor Portem.
So when I read the email, as Jeff mentioned, essentially what is being asked of council is for us to consider households in our community who have undocumented citizenship status that don't feel safe applying for these funds. And in these instances, Shelterhouse wants to have the authority to use City of Iowa City funds for eviction prevention and foreclosure prevention as the first response for these households. And so that is also, you know, zoning in on the eviction prevention and foreclosure prevention program. I, I guess at this point, I wanted to kind of get a, a sense of where council is on, on allowing Shelterhouse to have that flexibility. Are people in, do we have a majority in agreement? Yep. So I do see that. Awesome. So we'll go with that for staff direction. And then I did make a, you know, kind of proposal for somewhat of a second round and wanted to get some thoughts on that.
Seemed like a good idea to me, Mayor.
And, and in general, I mean, it's always better for people and, and better for the community to keep people housed. The last thing we want is for, is for people who are currently housed to end up not housed.
Be consistent among the programs. Do you want it to go up to six months and forty eight hundred to match the CDBG program?
How much is the CBD program?
The CDBG program, it has to be consecutive months, but it's six months up to forty eight hundred.
But I think, so when we say second round, just like the state, even the state give the first round three thousand six hundred. But we being giving three thousand two hundred. I think as you said earlier, six thousand four hundred, which is the same second round. That's kind, we can call it second round. That's what I think.
It doesn't matter on my end. I was just didn't know if you want to be consistent with other programs that we have out there, if you want. It's whatever you guys want.
Sure.
I think we're already not being totally consistent with other programs. Like I do think allowing the flexibility of non-consecutive months is important.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We want, we want to do consecutive just because if you don't have to, it gives us a lot more flexibility.
I think a second round matching the first one that we did makes sense to me. So an additional thirty two hundred.
Okay.
I agree.
A reasonable amount on a monthly basis, I would say, continuing.
So I guess the one question would be, so let's say someone came and they're reapplying and they only got two thousand. I want to be clear to the council that what we're saying is that two thousand has been accounted for, that's over and done with. So now they're, you know, they use that two thousand within three months. They weren't consecutive. Now they're coming back and they're wanting, is it thirty two hundred dollars that they're going to apply for? And so as a new thirty two hundred dollars, they can't go then and add twelve hundred dollars to the thirty two. I want to make sure that we're clear on what we're stating right now. I personally am okay doing a second round with the thirty two hundred. Kind of, you know, if they, if they already have been said that they've, you know, maxed out or they met the other funding source, then we would start with the thirty two hundred with redoing that three month non-consecutive months.
So you're saying you're wiping the slate clean and they just apply for another thirty two hundred for up to three months?
At least that's, that's what I'm proposing.
Yeah. So I think the way that we would look at that and we'll, we'll have to coordinate with Shelterhouse to make sure it works is we would pick a date, say July first or some date and say, basically it's a brand new program. And whether you had received one month of assistance or three months of assistance as of July first, everybody is now eligible for three months, thirty two hundred dollars. If, if, if I'm capturing that correctly, I think that's how we would look at it.
Yeah.
I'm hearing second round a lot. So it's almost like you have to end the first round and then start fresh as Tracy said with the clean slate.
That makes sense because they could have been using the first round if they hadn't exhausted it yet. Was there a limit of like if they did one month and then waited three months and then another month and then wait, like it's, was it just within a particular timeframe?
I do think that there could be some people potentially that didn't get started until April, right? And so I guess if someone got started in April, yeah, we, we have to think about that at least so that we're very clear with Shelterhouse, how that, we need to be, you know, definitely clear on when it stops and when they are re-eligible.
But I think restarting it or having the second round start very soon is important.
So maybe, so maybe if we just went ahead and said July one and then maybe we potentially could allow anyone that has received maybe a first allocation. Well, I guess if they, if they were, let's say they came in May, June, and then they apply in July, would we just have them go into the next thirty two hundred? Should we just have a fast hard? June thirtieth is done. Now you're into the next thirty two hundred.
That seems the most, the simplest way to manage the funds to me.
And also it's very fair because, you know, if you apply on, you already now using your first round. Okay, starting July first, you can start use the second round. So you'll be given like, as a people who use their first round long time ago. Yeah, I think it's fair.
And since we've done a number of rule amendments, I think hopefully Shelterhouse will be communicative with us if they feel like that doesn't meet the need or if they're seeing other circumstances that, you know, hopefully they know they should raise that issue and bring it up.
Yeah, you know, they've been fantastic partners. They've been flexible. They, they've shared information with us through this whole process. No reason to believe that will change. I think they'll, they'll be very communicative with us.
I guess like going back to really to the CBD, I don't know, the money is there. I know like some people who use the water, you know, like they pay for their water for three months. And they, they saw that's it, but now is not consecutive. They still have water bill. You know, I, I really don't know. There is no way the CBD fund can be like.
No, ironically, it was good timing when this brought up a few days ago. There's a list served between Iowa entitlement cities trying to figure out if the, the second round of money through the CARES Act would, would trigger, you know, could we, could it not be consecutive? But yeah, it was decided among the Iowa entitlement cities until we got confirmation from the Omaha office that they would allow us. And basically one of us, one of the cities sent a letter to the HUD, asked a question. We just basically got, go back to your waiver, which is six months of consecutive assistance. So I'm pretty sure it's six months consecutive.
Yeah, you know, this is really now we have the money, we have people who needed and we cannot use it. So.
All right. So I, I do think at least for the second round, which we're going to call it, you have direction there. Staff, you need anything else?
Nope. I, I think I can draft it. I think I have a clear understanding, but Jeff's always helpful. He sends that, you know, that letter, that email out afterwards, just to confirm. So I think we got it.
We'll correct them if it's incorrect. All right. Any other item now is an opportunity still for us to talk about American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds. So any, any more thoughts there?
Well, I, I would like to just comment that I, I was just did in Jeff's comments regarding, you know, the, the more long-term, medium to long-term envisioning that could be associated with this plan, you know, the imagine and dream aspect of it. And certainly when, when Jeff mentioned neighborhood centers, that, that got my attention. I, I, I am very interested in that concept. And I, I know I've spoken to other counselors about this, this notion of, of testing in a sense, modeling, trying to understand if say, for example, with neighborhood centers, how that might work and identifying sites where, where we could explore what that would translate to in a kind of tactical way. So this would be like our tactical rescue plan, trying to understand you know, how some of these elements could be applied to Iowa City. But yeah, I think it really does lend itself to seeing what other cities are doing and trying to leverage these dollars, you know, s- small bets as Smart Towns, you know, organization that I'm interested in would put it, making small bets to try to advance what's more essentially kind of a restructuring, if you will, of our society. Because COVID did really reveal that as well. So where we can make those improvements. This, this does seem to be a once in a lifetime opportunity to explore those ideas.
With respect to the, the ARPA funds, I, there were, I wanted to see how soon we can set a date for public input. Because when we're, the, the last time we did sort of rounds of public input, it was just really important not to to, to get a date or both dates set. And, and the other thing that I just wanted to mention was the, I appreciate Jeff, you're saying that you understood that some of, that we may need to use some of these funds for emergent situations and be willing to do that. I mean, understand, but with the understanding that there may be some other documentation requirements, but it's important to know that we may in a position at some point where we need to say, we're going to use five hundred thousand or a million or whatever of these funds to fulfill some of these other needs to prevent whatever, whatever outcomes we don't want that are a result of COVID.
I think we can get the dates set probably in the next couple of weeks. We wanted to have this conversation first, just to make sure we weren't missing expectations on what this first round of input looks like. But if you're comfortable with the, the plan that Rachel put forward, we'll begin to execute on that next week and, and hopefully set some dates for, for July, early August.
I really will encourage you to reach out to immigrant associations and ask them to, if you share the survey with them. And they can, they can share it with their WhatsApp group. So everybody will come in your phone, their phone, and they come for the doubt. I, I see that we receive it as easily. Yeah. And we're just planning to anyone who will come for help for IFA or anyone who will come for help for my home to yours. While they sitting there, we have this on like a tablet. So we can just give them the tablet and ask them, yeah, while you're sitting waiting, can you just fill out this? So I think if we can reach out to also like another immigrant associations and refugee association and ask them to do the same thing would be great.
Yep, we can definitely do that. And as soon as we get the translated materials, I think we'll make a push for that.
The other thing I know that you mentioned, the farmer's market, but I assume that that's going to be happening in, in August is what I think I heard you mention. It would be great if there was opportunity to do it at the diversity market, but the last meeting or the last time there will be the tenth of July. So if there's any way to kind of have opportunity for some input before that is over, that would be great. But this is a great opportunity, the ARPA funds. I'm, I'm looking forward to being creative with it. Find a ways to stabilize individuals within our community as well as do some investment when we're talking about affordable housing, if that is what, you know, the community really wants to kind of use some funds for. So I'm looking forward to this. I know that we have heard from various groups, excluded workers funds, exclude the workers have been a group that have come before us that, or that's what's been put before us. And I know that we want to pay, you hear from them and I like the idea of doing the targeted input opportunities for people. So yeah, looking forward to this. Eighteen point three million. That's quite a bit of money. Very appreciative for it. All right. Any other thing for this item? Okay. I think since we have a little time for five PM, I want to go ahead and jump down to clarification of agenda items. Here in none. We'll jump over to the June third info packet. I did want to just make mention of the tentative schedule for people. So our next meeting, the city council meeting will be live and in person. And it's going to be held at the Singer Center, which is, is it twenty eight South Lynn Street? And we'll begin at four PM will be our work session. And then six PM will be our formal meeting. And so that will start next meeting, which will be July sixth. So I wanted to make note of that for everyone on the call as well as in the public. And I'll also mention that we will not meet, we're switching up the last day of the month. So of, of when we're meeting. So we'll meet the first Tuesday of the month and then the fourth Tuesday of July. And our first meeting in August, we will cancel. So the first Tuesday in August will be canceled. So just take note of that. All right. Any other items from that info packet? We'll switch over to June tenth. And then here in none.
Oh, sorry, Mayor. It's slow on unmute. Um, just the Neighborhood Development Services annual report was really excellent and just fascinating data. So I really hope that people had a chance to look at that and I hope we can promote that online. Especially exciting to think like looking forward as we accumulate, or we can kind of look at this from year to year. Twenty twenty was such an unusual year. So some of the, some of the information in there, I kept having to be like, yeah, but that was twenty twenty. So it'll be really fascinating. I think once we have, you know, additional full years of this format continues. And it's just really good information about the community, about housing, about all kinds of things that was just really useful to learn more about the department too. So thanks to Tracy and her team for putting that together.
Mayor, if you do have time in preparation for your in-person meeting on July sixth, staff did just want to check in with you and, and see if, if you wanted any mask requirements at that meeting for the public or. for the public, or if you're comfortable just promoting the CDC guidance and allowing those individuals to follow that themselves.
Yeah. So at least from my perspective, May 18th is when I lifted the mask mandate and asked, you know, everyone to follow the CDC guidance, which means if you're not vaccinated, we ask that you wear a mask. And if you are vaccinated, according to the CDC, you can be in public unmasked, I guess personally, I am still comfortable with that. I don't know what other counselors are thinking.
I think that's a good point, Mayor, because I'm, I'm having a little trouble envisioning that senior center meeting room and how that's going to be designed or laid out as far as for when the public, how much public, how many public we're going to allow in, how we're going to have the access in there, et cetera. And not knowing, I mean, obviously we can't require them to have a sticker that says I'm vaccinated, not knowing whether they are or not. Trusting them that if they're not vaccinated to wear a mask, just for the safety and courtesy and health of, of those who, who might be more comfortable with that.
I think I'll just make mention that it'd be 30 to 40 seats and they'll be six feet apart. Will we have masks available at the meeting? If anyone should forget to bring one.
We certainly can. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and thank you for the clarification, Mayor, of how the, the seats will be set out. That was actually my other question, which you answered without my having to ask it.
And when is this going to be? I missed that.
Our first meeting in July.
Don't tell me that.
Yeah.
I haven't had my second shot yet, but we'll see.
Okay. All right. Any other items from related to that?
Oh, just, just quickly, Mayor, then. I don't know whether members of the public would be concerned about as far as the microphone and that sort of area, if we have a podium, if it's wiped down in between speakers, whether we might think about that, or whether that's a concern or not anymore.
Yeah, I think we can certainly potentially make some wipes available for people who have, you know, that concern. I think also we can be intentional in making sure the mic stand is set up where people don't have to touch as well.
And have we talked about like, if people don't want to come to the council meeting and how they can still participate with Zoom or in a big screen or anything, are we going to still have that?
We don't have plans for, for a hybrid for this transition back to in-person. We do have a screen, you know, we'll bring in a screen for the public like you normally would have in your council chambers, but we don't have any hybrid options. I think if long-term you want to pursue that, we really need to be back in the council chambers where we have some better technology to be able to to do that. That would be, I'm not sure we could pull that off in the senior center, the way it's set up there today.
What about when the council are not able to participate, they are away, like for me, I will be in the month of July. And I used to call in on the meeting at the room here.
Yeah, Kelly can probably better answer that.
Yeah, we, we've got communications and IT staff looking into that call-in option for, for counselors like you would normally have at Harvard Hall.
Okay, that, from now, I'm going to just let you know that the month of July has begun. So the two meetings of July, I will, I was thinking to do this through Zoom, but if it's not going to be Zoom, please find out something for me to participate. Please.
Great. All right. Any other items from June 10? I info packet? Any council updates on assigned boards, commissions and committees? Hearing none. All right. I think what we'll do is we have just about five minutes before our meeting. We'll just take about three minutes and we'll be back.
Yeah.
Give counselors a little break. Welcome, P and Z, our planning and zoning commissioners. We're super excited that you're here with us today. Would love to have you in person here in council chambers, but we'll get there at some point. Wanted to maybe just make sure that all of our counselors and our commissioners are present. And so I'm going to make sure that our counselors, I'm if our council, if everyone can turn on their video, if you would, as well as our commissioners. We have seven commissioners. I'm going to make sure that our counselors are here for starters and that we kind of just do a wave so that people know who, who they are. So all of our counselors are there. And then I'm going to go ahead and just have our commissioner say here, that way I'll know that you are present. I'll start with, in no particular order, Maggie Elliott. And we can't hear you.
Here.
There you go. Great. Mark Signs.
Here.
Phoebe Martin.
Here.
Mark Nolte.
Here.
Ellie Townsend.
Here.
Michael Hinch.
Here.
And Susan Craig. So I don't see Susan, if she should join. I'll make sure that I acknowledge her at that time. So we are here to have a joint meeting with the planning and zoning commission related to the rezoning of Hickory Trail Estates. And so I know that there was a couple of rounds that this project came before P and Z. And this was on the council's last agenda, where the, the majority of the council stated that they would not support P and Z find or vote. And so that's why we are here today, just to have a discussion about this project. We always like to bring in P and Z when there seems to be a vote that would not be as the same that you have given. So I'll just open up the floor for any of the counselors or the commissioners that would like to start out this conversation.
I guess I'll go ahead and start as chairperson. This is Mike Hinch. Hello, Mr. Mayor and city counselors. This is my seventh year, I believe, on P and Z, and I think third or fourth year as chair. So if I can just hit a couple of points of discussion that maybe we can talk about or just reflect upon. The first off is, is, as you well know, there's a lot of public input on this particular development item. And it seems like a thing that was lost frequently in the discussion was that this is in fact, private property, and it is going to get developed eventually. So just sort of to start with that concept. Secondly, the P and Z's responsibility, and I believe that responsibility, I believe we met that is to ensure that the comprehensive plan is complied with by the that the particular development application, that the district plan is complied with, or at least the spirit of it. And all the various development ordinances are followed. Just to refresh your memory, this came before P and Z three times. It failed the first two votes and was approved six to one on the third vote. And each time it came back, the comments and recommendations and concerns of P and Z were addressed, in my opinion, in subsequent applications or modifications of the application from the applicant. I, I believe from the evidence that we saw is the developer in the engineering firm worked in good faith with the city staff. It seemed like that went fairly smoothly. It didn't seem like there's a lot of friction. It seemed like it was above board and honest and open communication. And I believe that there should be some predictability for applicants and developers that if they follow the rules, if they follow the comprehensive plan, the district plan in the various development ordinance, ordinances that they will receive approval by P and Z and then by city council. I think a couple of things to particularly look at that get lost sometimes in conversation is the concern of the public freak on this was about single loaded streets. And you'll see in the third application that was approved by P and Z, about three quarters of the housing on the main through street was in fact, on single loaded streets. And it is interesting to note that about 14 acres in this development area of about 48 acres. So about 30% of the rezoning area, not including the conservation easements, 14 acres will be added to Hickory Hill Park. And that's a pretty substantial growth. And I, I just know there was a lot of feedback from the, from citizens. But I think P and Z, our job is to ensure that the ordinances are followed and the rules are followed. And I think that's very illustrative when you look in that P and Z packet, particularly the Bluffwood, Bluffwood Neighborhood Northeast Development Plan map. And if you overlay that with the April 29th Hickory Trail OPD plan, it's almost a direct overlay. I granted, there's not the streets with cul-de-sacs in it, but the pattern is the same layout, layout of the houses are very similar. And lastly, I think it's important to note, and I think this is a public policy issue. It's important to integrate older adult facilities, whether it be a just a, a independent living facility or, or something where somebody needs assisted living or memory care or a nursing home, that those facilities are integrated into the neighborhoods. Because those people are, are our friends, our families, our, our neighbors, and they shouldn't be relegated to commercial areas or industrial areas, that they should be part of the neighborhood, they should be part of the community. And they should have equal opportunity to access amenities of the community, particularly the parks. And so I know there was some resistance to the, the older adult facility. And I just personally view that as misguided. So those are just my comments that I just wanted to share with you this evening.
Thank you. And I still welcome anyone just to chime right on in.
So since I was the dissenting vote, I, or dissenting vote, I would think I'd like to chime in and respond to what Mike said. Because I respectfully disagree with a few of those points. And obviously, yes, it is private property, but I really do think that part of being on planning and zoning is being able to take an opportunity to make, to really look at every application. And yes, there's a comp plan. There are these ideas. There's this, you know, wouldn't this be great if this happened? That's not always going to be the case because it doesn't always fit just so. And I feel like, yes, that the last iteration of the plan was very, very close. And it wasn't just so, but I felt that that this was the time that we could take that opportunity to get it closer to what the comp plan indicated. And really be thinking about this in the long term, because as I've said in, in previous meetings, that part of our job is to leave a legacy of, of as good a choice as we possibly can for, for the future of Iowa City. So I understand that it is private property. Yes, it's going to be developed, but I just want to make sure that every, every piece of it has been looked at as carefully as possible and that, and that we don't give in to people just because they are going to keep putting forward their requests. I don't feel that I'm not going anywhere. You, you just cannot beat me down. I will, I will still want to make sure that we're looking at all of the information as best that we can. Mike indicated that he felt that the engineers had operated in good faith. I think so. With the exception of the of the taking the single loaded streets, yet moving the entire the entire development over. I don't have the, the pictures in front of me, but I felt like it was almost as houses were just as close to Hickory Hill, even though it was single sided, it was still that much further over. Certainly no argument on elder care facilities at all. And I don't know that that was even really a question, or maybe I just didn't even think about it as being a question because I think that's, that does not seem like an argument to me. I definitely appreciate the added acreage to Hickory Hill Park. I wish we could have more. Obviously we can't. That's okay. And believing in predictability, that was such an interesting statement, Mike, I want to unpack it just a little bit. I think that that is supposed to be what we do is have a modicum of predictability. And part of that should be making all applicants really, really bring to the table all, all of the pieces and their due diligence and making sure that they really thought outside the box and made sure that that all options have been looked at. And that's my opinion. I know that's not always how it works. But that's, that's kind of where I've been at with this, that I know that we can get to a point where, where we could all agree and be 100% and that the community could feel supported. The community members that spoke in in favor of the development, if I recall correctly, and this is just my brain going off of memory. All of those community members were in some way affiliated with ACT, and I found that to be interesting. So not that their opinions aren't valid by any means, but I just thought that that was an interesting take. So it, I just think about the community as a whole, and I want to make sure that we as, as volunteers are are doing our due diligence to make sure we're making good choices with the information that we have. So.
I just want to chime in a bit. The, the concern I had is, if I remember right, the neighborhood organization are, had a chance to buy that property and declined to do it. So they had the option of acquiring that, that acreage for Hickory Hill, if that was something that they felt they felt they should do. We sent them back three times. I thought they came back with a very good plan in the end. And yeah, we would like to keep that, keep Hickory Hill Park as that monumental spot in Iowa City. But again, this is private property. And when you have the option of buying it yourself and doing what you want, or someone else buying it and doing what they want, I think we have to look at that. So.
May I, may I chime in one more time? I don't want to take other people's spots. Okay. Um, agreed with Billy, absolutely. But one of the things that I thought about in our very first meeting of this was the fact that we always do a, you know, the sanitary sewers, the looking at the water retention, looking at all of that, looking at traffic studies. But one of the things that we have not done, because typically we don't need to do, are the impact of wildlife, the flora, the fauna. And because this is so close to sort of a refuge for so many animals of all types. And, you know, the fact that here we are experiencing an earlier drought than usual. These are all things that we have to take into consideration. And I think that these are things that over time are going to fluctuate. And it seems to me that that should be something that gets incorporated. And because we haven't really had to deal with this, we have not had another, at least while I've been on planning and zoning, we've not had another development so close to Hickory Hill that has been empty just as long. development so close to Hickory Hill that has been empty just as long. And what impact does that carry? And are we really, you know, are we doing our full due diligence? I mean, yes, we did the, the study for the, oh my gosh, I forgot, the artifacts, sorry, don't remember the terminology. But anyway, I feel like this is a unique property in that it has a potentially greater impact on, on another portion of our community, which is our, which is our, our climate is our environment. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
Well, I'll, I'll comment, first of all, I want to thank the council for reappointing me to the commission. I was very excited to learn that, I do appreciate that, looking forward to serving the community for another five years on P and Z. So several things that I'll, I guess I'll comment on. You know, when the first vote we had on this was seven to zero, or zero to seven, nobody voted for it. I think on the second vote, we had one person vote for it. And the third time the developer came back, you know, I think the majority of us felt like they had addressed as much as they could possibly address in, in, in trying to come up with a plan that, you know, that came closer and closer and closer to what was originally envisioned in the, in the neighborhood plan and the comprehensive plan. One of the things I pointed out about early on about the neighborhood plans, the neighborhood plan is, is almost 15 or 20 years old, I don't have it in front of me right now. I kind of was in a rush getting home. The neighborhood plan for that neighborhood is quite old, you know, and the comprehensive plan had, had some different things in it that, that weren't quite as restrictive as, as what the neighborhood plan may have, may have been. And I think we have to, you know, to Phoebe's point, and you know, I think as commissioners, we have to, we look at the plans, we look at the codes, we look at, you know, we look at the community and, and we, you know, try to find that, you know, to find that blend. And I, you know, and I feel like on this one, I mean, it's, it's pretty unusual for us to have a zero seven vote and then go all the way to a, to a, to a six one vote. I, I don't recall that ever happening, quite frankly, which really indicated to me that most people felt that the developer had made some significant changes. To Phoebe's point on, on the, on the, the people who spoke in favor, being in, in favor of ACT, I was also amazed at the number of people who spoke against it who don't live in Iowa City. The, the folks did an amazing job of, did an amazing job of rallying the troops as they often do. And we got letters from all over the country talking about this, this valuable space in our community. And I don't think, and I don't think anyone disagrees, Hickory Hill is a, is a unique piece of property. One of the, one of the things that I did find a little humorous was one of the letters opposing this subdivision came from someone who lived on, I can never remember the name of the street, it's Hickory something on the west side of this little piece of property where they have, you know, three quarter million dollar homes. One of those residents spoke against the development on the other side, which I found a little bit interesting. I, you know, I, I also go back to, and I've said this many times, I always struggle with trying to balance property rights with the community good. You know, and, and we get into this, you know, as you know, with affordable housing, and you've all talked to me about that many times. You know, as, as I understand it, this piece of property was offered to Hickory, the Friends of Hickory Hill Park years ago, and they declined to purchase it. It was offered to the city of Iowa City years ago, and they declined to purchase it. You know, at some point, someone else has got to come along and do something with it, and they have, they have now. And, and I guess, you know, I didn't make any friends with the historical preservation people, but I had the same, I had the same, you know, challenge to them is if, if we, if we feel these pieces of property are so important to our community, then we need to be proactive about taking care of them and not just reactive when someone comes along and does something that we don't like. You know, the, the ACT people pointed out to us that, quite frankly, the public has been trespassing on their property for many, many years. There are trails, there are instruments. And another thing that was a little disheartening for me is after our second, after the, after the first vote, maybe ACT went in and put up some, some fencing and some no trespassing signs that were very quickly tore down by the, by the parkgoers. And I saw a post on Facebook very clearly encouraging people to do that, you know, and I, and that just really rubbed me the wrong way. When, you know, if we're gonna, if we're all gonna play by the rules, then we don't need to play by the rules. And so that honestly did not sway me to vote, to change my vote. What swayed me to change my vote is that I felt that developers did an amazing job of listening and trying to adjust what they were proposing and still make money as they need to do as developers. I also, the, the senior one was a little intrigued, the senior housing project was kind of, also I found a little annoying because it wasn't hardly talked about at all in the first conversation we had. But as, as, as the developers started addressing other issues that were called, that were, they were called on, then the focus turned on, at the last meeting, a lot of focus was on the senior housing as, as being atrocious and being a big problem. And the first meeting, I don't recall that even hardly coming up. So, you know, they, the opponents were doing what the opponents should do and speak out against it. But at some point, you know, we've got code, we've got plans, we, that we do it. This community spends a lot of time on planning and community input. And I think does a very good job of seeking community input. And, you know, so we take all those things and we put them together and we try to make the best decisions we can. And, and I personally, I felt that the developer had, had done a lot to get to where they need to be, and I was comfortable moving forward with it.
Thank you, just jump right on in there.
So I'm just gonna keep going. No, Mike, I see you laughing. So I just wanted to respond to Mark that I don't, I don't think anyone is debating the importance of Hickory Hill. I think one of my big concerns is making sure that we're being really smart about adding more development right next to sort of a sanctuary, as it were. Not the, to me, not the infringement on necessarily the views of Hickory Hill. I understand that a lot of people think that's very important, sure, that's great. My biggest concern is still how negative another development right along there will, will negatively affect the environment, you know, because we haven't done these study, you know, studies before to see how that's going to affect the, you know, whether it's the animals, the flora, the fauna, the, there's a water, the creek that's down there. You know, I understand that developers are going to do their very best, I should hope, to make sure that everything is, you know, they don't have waste running into that watershed. But I think that it's, it's so close to this that I feel like extra attention needs to be paid to, to those, to those concerns.
Thank you.
I would love to hear from any, from the counselors, maybe, I didn't see the council session, I apologize for that. But I'd love to hear maybe the, from the counselors who were objecting to this, what your objections were.
I will just say, this is on our council agenda tonight, but counselors will be, you know, they, they can be free to share whatever they want. But we will be back at 7:00 PM to talk about this item, 6:00 PM, sorry, we have a new time. But I know personally, I find it very valuable to, to have you all kind of share your thoughts and, and your positions.
One of the things that I would say is it hasn't been mentioned, but going to that single loaded street really opens up the park not only to the people who live in the area, but to the community. Because it's, because we don't have the cul-de-sacs, it's a, it's a through street. I feel like it really is open to the community and, and well, it's a welcoming area to the park that they wouldn't have had otherwise. So I thought the developer did what, what was asked of them.
And we did, we did comment, there is a piece of, a section where a lot kind of in the middle was being dedicated to the city, so there could be a, a trail access. And, and we encouraged both the developer and the city to look at possibly putting a, a little, a small parking area or a little pocket park or something in that area to make it a little bit more inviting, because there were concerns from the residents that in, in some of the entrances to Hickory Hill Park aren't necessarily real, you know, visitor friendly or accessible. And certainly there is an opportunity here, I think, for that to happen. So I, I would, I would encourage if you move forward with this, to have, encourage the Parks Department to look at, you know, what, what options there are to make that trailhead a little more inviting to the public.
I don't know if now is the time that I, I can add something as a council member, not necessarily about the plan, but Phoebe, I appreciate you said something about thinking about this in the long term and not necessarily thinking about this particular plan. But I think it's been on our list of potential work session topics for a long time to revisit things like the form-based code and comp plans and zoning issues. And I think that's something that you folks as a commission, also as commission members, could help us out and maybe even a joint session when we get to that. But it, it needs to be done, and that is something long-term that, and it really does need to be. And this kind of brings to the, to height of that, that, that we need to look at that and just really see. Because you or somebody had mentioned some of the plans being 15 years old or older. It's time to start revisiting that. So that's, that's just my thoughts on, on all of it.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the, the views that everyone from P and Z has brought us, including that essentially the, the focus on the codes and the ordinances we have, as well as the, as well as the comprehensive plan. It's, we have, we have the codes that we have, not the codes that we wish we had. And I, I really am gonna encourage council going forward to look at some of these issues we've been talking about doing for a long time, such as duplexes by right, such as once we can finally get the South District Form-Based Code finished, mirroring that in other areas of the city, thinking about climate, including climate, including the missing middle, including, including sort of different density. But that's not the code that we have out here right now. But it definitely needs to be on, on a coming session or a work session so that we can actually let, if, if, if indeed we believe that this and really creating more affordable housing are priorities, that we make sure that we make, that we, that we get working on the code changes and the zoning changes that we, that we believe are necessary to get that done.
I'll just, I'll just offer, you know, it was interesting with this specific piece of land, there were not one but two separate plans. And I think that was the, the challenge as this went through P and Z is, is we had, we had what the community at that time envisioned, and I agree with you, Councilor, that some of those plans need to be updated, but I think this developer was working within what the plan stated. And that's what we were held to as P and Z. And on the third, third attempt, what they brought for us fit what had been laid out as the plan for that area. So I think that's what my vote to support was, I think they met the, they met all the, the goals that were laid out in there. And you can, we can talk about whether or not those goals should be modernized and all that. But given the, the plans that they had and, and what was expected of them moving to the single loaded street, I didn't see how we could as P and Z not pass it on to council for approval.
I personally want to say thanks to all the commissioners. I know that I've read through your meeting minutes, and it seemed that it was quite intense at some, sometimes. And, and you've, I think you all have kind of brought up a point that I've mentioned here a while. When we're talking about the, the comprehensive plan, we know that we have the South District Form-Based Code coming forth, and that's going to really kind of drive where the council goes. I think with doing some form-based codes throughout the community. But I, I would like to say to our counselors as well as, and I heard someone give the invitation to the commissioners as well to be a part of this. We have two work session topics that are so critical that I believe that we need to get to. And it's, is item number two, which is discuss possible changes to residential zoning classifications to allow and/or require greater diversity of housing types, missing middle. As, and then number four is discuss development of a new comprehensive plan to promote housing affordability throughout the city. These are so critical, and I know that, you know, Mayor Pro Tem talks a lot about how kind of the heart of the community, like we know the heart of the community. And where, where we're, you know, getting in trouble is we don't have the codes in place right now. And that is not good, it's not, you know, predictability, I heard that mentioned. I think it should be predictable. Staff should know, the P and Z commissioner should know, developers should know. And council, when we go to, you know, make our decision, we should know that the plans that have been laid forth, people have abided by it. It's a challenge, it is a challenge. So thank you all for going through the challenge of trying to decipher, you know, what the old stuff with a little bit of the new, the cul-de-sac, the, you know, the, the single loaded street. I do hear Phoebe, as well as, you know, what is the legacy that we're gonna leave? That's important. And, and a part of the challenge is, we as a council, I have to tell you again, and because it's in our work session, and as a part of our IP, I'm still bringing up an item that is, that I can talk about, we have to figure out how to engage staff and council with this, with looking at rezoning so that it can be much clearer of what our community heart is now and our values now.
I really agree with you, Mayor. And I'm glad we're taking, you know, talking about this, even, you know, last time we didn't approve it and we asked the planning and zoning to come up. But, you know, this kind of discussion will remind us about what the missing and our master plan and what, as you said, what the heart of the community should go to. So, but that's true, I'm glad that we're having this. So we can just look at our master plan in the future and just try to make the change and make it on the code. So it will be there, we don't have to really come and say, oh, we, we need to do this, but it's not on the code. Yeah, let us really, maybe on the coming months, look at our code and just try to implement our value in the code. So the developer will know about it, and we will know about it, and the public know about it. So I hope this is, will be the start of the discussion moving forward.
I, I too wish, you know, I think predictability is an important value in this process for everyone. It's, you know, being on council, and I've served on P and Z as well, the council's at the back end of this whole process. If the process isn't well managed and functioning well in terms of understanding what initial, what the issues may be on a particular project, you know, that echoes through the whole thing. And by the time it gets to council, there's this feeling that, well, it's just, why were these things not identified earlier? You know, can, can come up. You know, there was a famous book in the literature of landscape architecture, my, you know, my, my profession until I retired, it was called Design with Nature by Ian McCard. And this is, this is a project where certainly it would have, you know, speaking and kind of following up on Phoebe's comment, it, it would have been a very interesting process to have started from, from that standpoint. You know, what, what would the design, if we were to design with nature, where would that take us? At least as a, you know, a starting point from that point of view and see to what degree it could help inform the outcome. And I think it would be helpful if we, you know, at an early stage in a project, begin to try to identify those projects where perhaps a little bit different point of view, even if it's not in our code, because, you know.
Because, you know, this is why we have comprehensive plans. It's difficult to identify every nuance and, you know, specific condition that may occur. But perhaps have a, you know, willingness to consider what, what other factors really need to be considered carefully before we move forward and having those on the table. And this is, you know, as we've noted, it's, it's both adjacent to Hickory Hill Park and the land form running through this area is this kind of alternating rhythm of ridges that can be built on and natural areas that form ravines and steep slopes. That's an interesting design problem. How do you, how do you work through that kind of configuration in a way which respects both? And, you know, I, I don't know that we had, I would argue, we're sort of here tonight, I think, as a result of the fact that we just didn't quite have, in my view, sufficient information to be able to evaluate the, you know, what would be the appropriate outcome.
I think this discussion of process is really helpful for me to think about and certainly something I, I care a lot about. And John, thanks for pointing out that where council comes in is on the very back end, right? And even planning and zoning, you know, my understanding is that the, a development would, would go to staff first and that, and that staff is tasked with helping make sure, for example, the sensitive areas ordinance is followed. And as I look through the items in our packet and I see how the, you know, the amount of woodland preservation has increased and the buffer around the creek has increased and, you know, the buffer to the park has increased. And, and, and maybe to your point, Phoebe, maybe that those underlying rules aren't aggressive enough for the moment that we're in, in terms of climate, you know, and Iowa City was really progressive with our sensitive areas ordinance. And, you know, maybe we need to be thinking about, you know, what the sort of margins of error are on that in today's world versus fifteen years ago. But I do think that, you know, you know, that at least I trust that those things were considered, you know, and that it's not a question of, is there any? I, I mean, I do, again, just having looked at the changes that have come through the different iterations, I do think that, that the slopes were really considered and the, the mature woodlands areas were considered and the, the waterways were considered. I know that there's a lot more that we could do. And, and I've heard the concerns of the residents and read through all that correspondence in our packet too. But I guess the part that's just kind of resonating with me as we sit through this is, is having that transparency from staff too of like, what does that look like when a development first comes in? And we're looking at not just the comp plan, but things like the natural areas. And how do we make sure that the, the heart, you know, of the community and these ideals and values are being represented there? Because personally I trust that they are, but I, I, I hear and I believe that we don't, we don't really have a lot of transparency into that part of the process. Just something to consider.
I wanted to welcome Commissioner Susan Craig. We are about six minutes left in our discussion time, but wanted to offer you an opportunity to speak.
I apologize for being late. I had a contractor at my house, he just left and I looked at my watch and went, oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness. Um, well, I don't know what's been said before, but I believe that the developments that are proposed are generally in keeping with the comprehensive plan overall. I think they are needed kinds of housing in Iowa City. And I believe that they have come a long way from the first proposal that they had. You know, I know that there, I love the park, as I, I said at, you know, the first meeting, I actually live on North Seventh Avenue in a house that backs up to the park. And so I've lived here for thirty-three years. I know how precious the park is and what it means to many people. It means a great deal to me as well. But this is private property and, and everyone, most people seem to start all their comments with it, we know it's going to be developed and we're not against development. But I, I feel that this development that is proposed is meets the corporate, the requirements of the comprehensive plan and will be good for Iowa City.
Before we leave, Mr. Mayor, if I can make one more comment, I want to respond to Laura's comments, if I may. Um, when you're talking about hoping that all of these things were considered, you know, going back to the environment and then, and the natural landscape. Obviously, I was not in the room where it happened, but we can look at the plan that they've drawn up in the slopes. You know, were they considered? I mean, they're developed right up to those slopes where they can't, where they can't be developed and that can't be a backyard. One of the things that I know we're always hearing and talking about are the fees in lieu of, but really without knowing what those, what the consequences are, the fees don't help anything. And I, so I still, I still go back to smart development and making sure that we're doing all the research that, that we can and that we should be doing. And even if that's a new, that it's something new, that, that's, that that's an ongoing conversation. So I just wanted to harp on.
Thank you. Any other final comments while we're here together?
Just one last one, Mr. Mayor. Everyone was talking about updating the comprehensive plan. I, I think that's a great idea. There's some sub district plan, I'm district plans that don't exist and other district, district plans that are quite elderly and need to be updated. And also the fringe area agreements are pretty dated. And, and I, I understand that's being worked on now and almost ready. But, you know, those three key elements of development, fringe area degree agreements, development plans and district plans and comprehensive plans, they all seem to need to fit hand in glove. And so there's just a ton of work to be done. And so they support that P and Z can do, particularly for neighborhood services, we certainly stand ready.
I think I want to correct the terminology and not say update, but overhaul.
Okay.
Also, one comment, I guess I, I have a problem with affordable housing being thrown out as this phrase that we use. But nobody seems to be able to tell me exactly what this affordable housing piece actually is. Who can afford it? So I think that's something else we need to look at and maybe tie down. What is actually affordable housing when we talk to these contractors? Cause we're not, I mean, they're getting something for this. They're getting, you know, height, height. Yeah, anyway, they're, they're getting something out of it. And I think we ought to be a little more specific about what we're asking from them.
Here, here. Anything else from anyone before we end our time together? Thanks again, commissioners for spending time with us. We really appreciate all the hard work you do. You've kind of shown us through your comments today, just how difficult the decisions you are and just how intentional you are at doing your research to make sure that you're listening to the public because they're valuable. You're also doing what council has charged you to do. And that is to look at the plans and to make sure that it is in, in compliance. And so thank you all for sharing your thoughts on what happened from your perspective in, in regard to this project. Thanks to each of you. And we will end our time together as an entire work session. And we'll be back to, at six PM, counselors, sign out and sign back in. See you at six PM.